This meeting is ordered at 5:30 on October 14th. A regular meeting of City Council, City of Fort Gaines. The Council Attorney will... Morris will not be in attendance. He had a conflict in the schedule, overbooked so to speak, and he's out of state. And Byron also, he's not... He's under the weather, so he won't be attending as well. So with that, we will call a meeting to order. A moment for invocation. We'll direct ourselves. Father of the kids, thanks for today for your many mercies, your blessings. And everybody, what are we asking of God as we make decisions and deliberate on the part of the citizens of City of Fort Gaines who represent God and who want to see this much benefit to the city in these things we pray. Okay, you get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I make the motion, I approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Counselor, Dr. Kinsel. Motion by Counselor Span. Any discussion? I just wanted to mention one thing. Max Marbles, the city engineer, is here to speak on a matter of 6E. So that will kind of support whatever it is that Council Simmons has. But it has to do with road resurfacing. So we'll just have that discussion on Max. All right, the Counselor?
Maybe.
Seven?
I'll make.
All right. With that, comment on the favor of the agenda, side of eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? Motion and a second to... On the Minister, approve the minutes of September 9, 25.
I make the motion, approve the minutes of September 9, 25.
And a second?
Second.
By Counselor Span. Any discussion? All in favor, side of eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? And again, minutes of special call meeting, September 25th. Motion to approve the minutes and a second.
Make the motion that we approve the minutes of special call meeting, September 25th.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, side of eye?
Eye.
Any opposed? All right, come to the section for public comments. Anyway, we ask that you keep the comments to three minutes. We would like to report on the sort of others. This is a public space. This is only a presentation, Counsel, it's not a dialogue. But we will take your comments in consideration. Any comments from the public?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
My name's Andy Burns. Many of y'all know me. I was told, just asked to come down here and bring out a little pamphlet of what we do. My company, we help with, as far as making collections if we have delinquent taxes. I know Dr. Kinsel's familiar with the process. She has bought several properties at some of my sales that I've done. But I just wanted to introduce you all to this process because I'm sure with every small town, they are hurting for unpaid delinquent taxes as far as that revenue is coming in. But I just wanted to pass these out and leave it at that, okay? Charlotte, do you want one of these?
Yes, please.
I ask a question?
Certainly.
For the clarification.
Go ahead.
Historically, only the county has done this. Is there a way for the city to also do this?
Yes.
Yes.
Like I said, we do, we collect all the time for both city and county properties within the same county entity. Basically, that goes as far as how that'll go on the day of the sale. If y'all, if y'all's sale is the same day as Bobby's with the county, her lien does, hers will come first, and then y'all's will follow shortly thereafter, within the same day period, within the same couple of hours. Now, like say, say you have a piece of property that's both in the city, that is inside the city limits, and you have liens as well as she has liens. Like I say, those can get a little tricky at times, but y'all can both claim it. And for example, take Shot Leroy, take the Shot Leroy property over here that I know was not, that went to sale last year. I know y'all had liens against it as well. It sold for the county. And you can do as like Charlotte has done in years past and claim said excess funds from the sales. That is one way to get your money back. Other ways, say it doesn't sell in the county, but it sells in the city, then Bobby would be the one doing that. But yeah, it's very, it's common.
So currently, when the county sells, we do get, the city does get their cut back?
No, not the full cut. The city right now only gets whatever excess funds are available. So say that property owes $900 in the county and $1,800 in the city. If that property doesn't sell for over eight, you know, for over that $900, say it sells at that $900, the city loses its money. So the city's out.
But then...
Dr. Kinsel, just to stay, to stay true to the format.
Okay.
This is only a presentation.
Right. My phone number's there, Dr. Kinsel, if you would just, I'd say, call me, then we can talk later.
Okay.
And so we want to bring this on next meeting to be on the agenda for further discussion. This information is just for your review at this point, and then we can delve deeper at the next meeting. Okay? Anyone else with comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be hearing from...
Excuse me?
All right. Unfinished business has to do with the sale of the police vehicles. Does anyone have any questions on this? This is just unfinished business, so let's move along on the agenda. Further discussions on that is tied to the presence or not presence of the police department. Those vehicles will still be for sale. We'll file update, Counsel, on any further action at this time. But as of right now, we still possess them.
Okay, so from last month, have we made any progress with getting those parts, you know, off that we discussed last meeting? We discussed that we were going to get someone in to start taking, getting those parts off so that we can possibly make a sale. So where are we with any of that?
Well, Chief Garcia made an offer to secure those vehicles and strip them. Whether, he made a presentation having to do with the police department. But as a side note, he also made an offer to purchase those vehicles, get them stripped and sold or let to secure those vehicles. He's here for another reason, but still, the sale of the police vehicles, if Counsel is willing to move forward, I can begin, finalize, because we already had the discussion, finalize discussion to transfer those vehicles to Chief Garcia, and he'll be responsible for stripping, taking the decals off of them, returning those items that's stripped back to the city. And if anything comes from the sale of the vehicles, that would be handled as well. So Counsel wants to move forward with that, and give him the okay to collect and secure those vehicles.
I mean, we have a, we have a process in place for selling old vehicles and stuff like that, Remont Cars, Old Public Works, all these other vehicles. All we had been discussing was just the decals needed to come off, some of the equipment needed to come out, things like that. And then we were going to run them in the paper like we do with every other vehicle that we have, including all the police cars. And if he wants to make a bid on, just like, it's just an open bid process, just like any other vehicle that we've sold. And I thought that's where we were at, and we were going ahead. You had just said last meeting you didn't have the time to get around to getting into it. You had other stuff that were more pressing matters. And I think we're here again, just trying to find out what's going on with those vehicles. I don't recall getting into a lengthy discussion about offers and cleaning the vehicles and all that. I mean, it's just a, it should just be a basic process of us removing it off there and then listing the vehicles like we've done before, or putting it on go deals or doing whatever we're going to do with it. But it should be the same process that we've always kind of done.
All right, so to respond to the first question about removing the parts and cleaning the decals, as of now, no, that has not yet happened. We could, I can conclude, we conclude that first, as part of the bid process or possession process. Possessing the cars, then these are the things that has to happen. Move equipment and cleaning decals. But that has to happen either at the expense of the city prior to putting it out for bid or at the expense of the buyer of unsecuring the vehicles.
I would suggest we attempt the latter, just to facilitate and streamline this process, that we go ahead and place an ad for those vehicles with the contingency that the purchaser has to provide for the removal of the decals and equipment before they take possession.
And then like the city attorney said a couple meetings ago, that they can be listed and sold, they just can't be transferred or anything like that with all that stuff on there. So it can be listed for sale, put on there, but before any transfer is done. So kind of like Dr. Kinsel saying, you know, put that onus on the buyer of the bidder. You know, that, to keep that in mind, that that's going to be, have to be removed, all that stuff.
Okay.
So do we need to just go ahead and... Yeah, I made that, I made that motion.
We already did.
We already did.
Did it make, did it actually, was it submitted to the paper?
No.
So that's where we, that's where we need to be. Well, how something that can happen?
It'll be next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Well, we need to make that happen.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that this contingency is part of that process, the removal before receiving the vehicles.
Do we need another motion?
No, no.
Okay.
No, that's just a, that's just a matter of procedure. All right, we'll put that in the, as a condition to receive the vehicle, make sure that is clear. Okay? Anything more? All right. Move on to ordinance number 2502 for the truck route. The attorney mentioned that he is working, I think, Counsel Simmons, you might have spoken with him?
I did.
Okay, you want to share?
Yeah, he was to draw up the ordinance. He wanted to know the street numbers, basically, you know, the 100 block, 200 block for the roads that the old truck route went on. There was not really anything on file. I contacted the sheriff and he said, you know, talk to Angela or talk to Sonny. But I just went down there and got Will, basically, the address from the beginning of the courthouse down at the end on Washington, and then starting it kind of, kind of runs into 201 right there, East Jefferson, because that road's kind of a half split on that property. So I gave him that address from the 201 down to the 100 on that side. So he was going to fill that out on the ordinance, just because he wanted the exact roads and distinction on there. And so that's why I sent it over to him yesterday. I went down there, got those addresses for him. And Locke was out of town, so he didn't get back to me till this morning to talk to him about it. But those numbers that I gave them are his proper numbers to put in the ordinance for the whole truck route.
That's all he's waiting for, to receive that information. Other than that, you'll...
He's got it. He's, I mean, he probably sent it over. Yeah, I sent it to him yesterday, so he's got it.
Okay, all right, good. He has it, so being out of town, so as soon as he, he'll be completing that, and we'll be done.
I'm concerned about the timeliness on that. Is there any way we can go ahead and vote to adopt that as soon as he finalizes it? Because again, we, it really is a dangerous situation having somebody who's coming through down to Fort Gaines.
Well, I mean, we already, we already adopted the, we adopted the route, but the ordinance itself, I mean...
Do we have to vote on that?
Wait, so we would just have to approve the ordinance, but as far as when we make a decision here, within 24 hours later, that decision takes effect. But if we needed an ordinance for, if somebody did get pulled over on the truck route, they're going to want to see an ordinance, and they're going to want that. So that's what we're going to need to approve.
But we will need to wait until next month?
To have something to put on the books.
We will need to wait until next month?
Charlotte has something to say.
That is not the way it's got to be handled. Your ordinance, once y'all adopt it, has to be sent to the state. And then the state reviews it. Then they, they're the ones that will decide whether it will be changed from a truck route to where it would be at. The city does not do that by ordinance.
We would have to approve before they want to know.
Yeah, it's got to go to the state before it can be approved, and they have to approve it.
So this begins the process. So at the local level, there is an ordinance submitted to DOT.
I think what she's asking is, should, should we go ahead and approve it tonight based on what Will's going to draw up? Or do we need to physically have that ordinance in our possession to be able to...
His position, the attorney's position is that it's already been submitted, it's already been approved, except for this edits. So there should be no action from Counsel.
So it can be submitted immediately to the state for their approval?
Do we all need to adopt the ordinance?
Nobody votes to change the route.
We did that, but the ordinance is separate from...
Right.
...the decision made. I'm just making sure we're doing it right, so we can get that in a timely manner.
You need to adopt everything before it is sent to the state.
Have we done that adequately already, or we need to see the actual form of the ordinance?
The attorney's position is that no further actions are needed by Counsel. If Counsel wants to feel that further action is required, then we'll proceed as such.
Well, I think he's going to say we still need to adopt the ordinance. I think that's what she's asking, do we need to adopt it this evening, or do we need to wait till Will gets done with it? That that's the question, Mark. I mean, I have enough faith...
If it was adopted at the last meeting, I want...
No, 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 we just, we just made the decision to do it last meeting. The ordinance is separate from that.
So then Counsel's position is to adopt, at the next meeting, we'll have the document in hand, so that we can then, for adopted, follow.
It, the ordinance needs to be read before the Counsel, before it is adopted. You can't just adopt something just without first reading it.
We should wait for attorney Morris to bring it...
Yes.
At the next meeting. At the next meeting.
All right, any more questions on that matter?
I hate the delay again, because I think it's a true safety issue, but if that's the only way it can be handled.
Okay, it still has to be submitted to DOT, if they don't move quickly.
We weren't, we weren't told that at the first go around. We were told that the city could go ahead and make their own truck route, so I'm confused about that.
All right, so then we'll take this up at the next meeting. Going on to new business, ordinance number 2503, annual ad valorem text. The ordinance is in your packet. I'll give you a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, 2503. An order setting an annual ad valorem levy providing for a date upon which taxes are due, providing for the collection of delinquent taxes, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with, and for all, and for other purposes. This is tied to the military acceptance of the last, this type of meeting.
I'll approve the ordinance, 2503.
And a second?
Second.
Counsel Simmons, any more discussion? All in favor, side of eye?
Eye.
Mr. Waters, your matter to Mr. Waters?
He called and said that he was not going to be able to make it, but what he was wanting, he stated there were some trees that had been cut down that were city property, and he was wanting to replant some trees.
On city property? Where, pray tell?
I don't, he did not tell me where they were located at, or...
So it's not urgent?
No.
I think some type of map and showing us an explanation would be needed.
Okay, we'll need more information on that one.
If he would like to revisit next month.
Okay, I'll tell him, yeah.
All right, so with that, we'll just wait for some orders to bring more information and stuff for the meeting next week, on the agenda for next, next meeting. Mr. Patel, off premises beer and wine. Again, your application is before you. This has already been reviewed, Charlotte?
Yes. What this is, is they're changing ownership of the store again, and so the new owners are having to get beer and wine license. And there's already beer and wine license at the store, but they just have to be, y'all have to approve for the new owners to get it, that they've already run in the paper and been fingerprinted and all applications and everything's been filled out. That needs to be done.
Get a motion, second, to approve this application.
I approve the Patel, off premises beer and wine. Second.
Second by Counsel, I'm going to go like, um, Span. All in favor?
Eye.
Any opposed? Axios approved. Mr. Haley Deeks?
She's not here.
No, no. Well, you have it in your, in your, in your package for your reference. Of course, you'll attend at the next meeting, but I know, you have your place in your package. I know a little bit. All right, road resurfacing, Mr. Simmons?
Okay, um, here, I guess sometime in '23, the city applied for a grant to put down some asphalt that had as a component recycled tires. And the grant was approved in late '23, and the money has not been spent, okay? So, and it's for $28,322. And it was tied to the, to some paving at the city shop, and sort of fit in with the long range plan there. It didn't use, the 311 tons is what we're required to put down in that project, and you can't use all that at the city shop. So there have been some streets that have been suggested as places where the additional tonnage could be used. Those are listed here. Lily Lane from Calhoun to the end of the pavement, the McCullough from Tru, back east to 128 feet, the Bluff Street from Jefferson to Commerce toward the circle as far as it will go until we use the 311 tons. Here recently, the city has been notified that the FY26 LMIG funds will amount to $27,929. If we pull that with the tire grant money and then put a little bit of extra money with it, we can do everything on the list. The, there are a couple of ways to approach this. It being a small project, the buyer negotiated with the contractor to, that if, if he is authorized to do it, he will cut his price from his original quote of $60,106 to $57,535. If we can do this without me having to put together bid documents and go out to bid on it, then it greatly reduces my effort and my cost on the project, and that would go from $7,500 to $2,500, bringing total project cost to six, a little over $60,000. The total of these two grants is $56,251. If we can do the simplifying method of negotiating with the contractor, then the additional funds required is $3,783, which you could use TIA or whatever for that, cash on hand or whatever you want to. There's a time issue in that grant, which was approved on December 5th, 2023. The money has to be spent within 24 months. That's December the 5th of this year. The timing of the project would preclude advertising the project in the paper. Now, you could go out and get quotes, but that's going to take some time, too. I was hoping the city attorney would be here and would say, given the size of the project, and given the fact that it's very much in the city's and the public's best interest to move forward with this project, that we can dispense with soliciting bids. I will say this, a 10-foot wide paved, paved section on Lily Lane from Calhoun to the end for $11,500. If you go down there and look at it, you know, I've looked at it, and I figured probably around $30,000. That is a very good price, and boy, it would really, the world would be a better place if we can take this man's prices, particularly negotiate with him. So I don't think that the city ought to do anything without the blessings of the city attorney. You know, it is, it is a public body, and even though the project's under $100,000, and the solicitation for bids, the city has a lot more flexibility on things like this, I'd still run it by the city attorney.
Who is this contractor who's paying so high taxes?
It's Mickey Rice, land clearing, who's done paving, forest here in Fort Gaines. He's done paving for me in Blakely. Everything that he has ever done for me has been first rate. Mickey is small, and he does small jobs, but he is a very good contractor. So I have no qualms.
On Wilson for the county.
Okay. He did work out at the Dollar General for us.
Yeah.
The Rubik job at that. He did three or four streets for me in Blakely. Did an excellent job on those. I just have a highest regard for him as far as his technical abilities.
So here's, here's what I put on there for, and all this stuff needs to get done. I don't dispute that. My question is, is this, one, is that tire grant able to be moved from the project that was trying to, because we asked that before, and we were told no, that it was not able to be moved.
The mayor, you...
That the scope of work had to be for the barn over there where it was written, and that could not be changed.
I think the mayor's got the, okay, I'll move that.
And then the other, my biggest concern was, and we've been told time and time again, that we cannot use TIA money for road resurfacing. And we have plenty of money in the TIA fund to be able to resurface roads, and waiting on the LMIG... And waiting on the LMIG twenty-twenty-six, I don't know if we can start work on that when the funds come in, and then waiting on that to get it done. Some of these roads, as everybody knows, need to get done immediately. And the fact that we have, that this project is a sixty thousand dollar project, and we have two hundred and forty-nine thousand in TIA money, I mean, the sooner we can get this stuff done, the better. And, you know, I, that was the discussion we had, having to wait on another LMIG project on the time of that, just didn't make any sense when, in fact, we can use TIA money to fix those roads and get it done as quickly as possible and get those roads fixed, because we have a lot of people coming in here asking us to fix these roads. And our concern previously was being able to get this done as quick without having to wait any longer, instead of, as we were told, we can just push it back to the LMIG, this project and all that. So as far as the timing goes, what will be the timing of this scope of a project? Obviously, we'd have to wait to talk to the city attorney about running this or running that.
Well, we're in FY twenty-six. It's my impression that this LMIG money is available immediately, all we have to do is have the scope of what we want to do with it approved. And maybe you jump in if I've said something wrong here.
But you, you continue to, you worked with us on, on all the applications.
Yes.
So it does require your, your review, your site work, your body of documents, submitting it, and waiting for the LMIG G-DOT to approve it.
But that has been a very expeditious process in the past.
In, in the last two applications, they have been able to respond to the application and with funds in hand in, in a couple of weeks, which was, surprised us, but, you know, we're pleased. So, but that's, that's a process. It does require your, your time and, and LMIG G-DOT's processing time as well before they check. So we're looking at, you know, several weeks, four weeks to, you know, four, five weeks.
But are there other projects that we can get done with LMIG money that we couldn't get done with TIA money that would come across the city? That we could use that LMIG for something else that needs to get done, and use the TIA money as quickly as possible to get these roads done immediately? And then find another LMIG project that this city may need, that TIA funds, that we don't have plenty of, might be able to knock cover? I mean, that, that's the whole thing is, is, you know, for a while, we just kept saying, you can't use it for this, you can't use it for that, but we can, we can use it for road resurfacing. But there may be a project that we can't use TIA money for, that we could use that LMIG money for.
It sounds like you've got a good fallback position. You've got a good fallback position if your LMIG money doesn't come in the way you think. You've got a good fallback. So the important thing is to move forward quickly, with the blessings of the city attorney.
And I think...
This has to be finished in seven weeks. So we have like zero time to be messing around.
Yes.
And the fact that the attorney has been present, with citizens coming in here complaining about those, about said streets.
He knows how important it is.
He knows how important that this is, so...
Well, I, I have no problem writing a letter saying it's very much in the public interest that this, this work be done.
Do we, we need a motion then, or?
No, we need, need to, the mayor, or, to notify Will some, get his blessing.
Can we just like pending Will's approval, let's move forward with it?
Or send it to his concurs.
Yes.
So we, we need a motion for that.
Yes.
I move we, I already know what to call this.
I'm calling it the Fort Gaines twenty-twenty-five paving improvements.
I move we move forward as soon as possible, the Fort Gaines twenty-twenty-five paving project.
Pending.
Pending approval by the city attorney for yet, yeah.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? I would ask, there's two options here that want to, want to tie, which of these options? I guess the most expeditious one would be the sixty thousand dollar budget, as opposed to sixty-seven thousand dollar budget?
Well, I think the most expeditious one would be...
Well, it would definitely be the one without, without the LMIG, right?
Does the council concur with the negotiated price with Mickey Rice? I guess is the question, rather than going out and soliciting bids?
Yes.
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 Okay. That's my motion. Right?
Right.
Let's go with pending Will's approval on that as well, because that may be an issue.
Well, that is an issue.
That is an issue, yeah.
Okay, all right. So that being a discussion, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Max. Okay, the proposed committee reports on the ARC. You want to go first?
Well, yes, I'll start with, I don't know if anyone, well, right now, if you are on social media and you have been looking around, with, within a month, there were some young gentlemen who approached me in hopes of creating a recreational flat football team. And that overwhelmingly has, has taken off. We have spoken with the superintendent. Superintendent has extended any type of help with the school board, with having them to utilize parts of the field at the current school for practices and meetings. They have gotten under overwhelmingly, parents, and there is some community support coming from various churches, and just individuals started out at fifteen, and we're currently up to over forty. They have included young girls and females, because we looked around in other surrounding towns, down in Early County, Blakely, they have a coed flat football team as well, and it, and it consists of people from around, around these towns, including, we have a student that's here before this came about. He's playing down in Early County. So I spoke with them, I mentioned it to Jesse before, but they had been conducting practices on the weekends over in our city park. And again, the overwhelming amount of people showing up to see what we, what they were doing. My part was just to try to get the information out there to all those who were interested. They just concluded with a fundraiser this past weekend with all the homecoming activities that was going on. They were at the Chevron, and it was a huge, you know, success for those kids to get out and actually wash cars, and people were donating. So Jesse and I spoke yesterday?
Yeah.
We spoke yesterday, because they, they ran into the issue of, of not being able to play other towns, because they were not under a, a rape department, and we do know, we do not have one. So Jesse, you can pick up from there.
So we had had a, a large meeting a few months ago, Dr. Kinsel was there as well, and I think everybody kind of stopped in at some point when Mr. Tim had that meeting down there with everyone, and they came to that meeting and were expressing an interest in doing a flag football. And they kind of got stuff rolling now. Mr. Tim talked to the school, Frederick talked to the school, they went out and talked to the school, got it all approved through that. The issues that they're having now is when they're going to these other leagues and other recreation departments to start trying to play a couple of games, to get some teams. They have enough kids to play amongst themselves for now, but like he said, there's about forty people out there, but they're also different ages. So you've got about twenty and twenty of under nine, and then over nine. So what they, every, every place I've kind of spoke to, asked what recreation department they were with, what group, what organization they were with. And, you know, them just being a private group of guys right now makes it extremely difficult for them to be able to join to play in Early County, or play in the tournament in Columbus, or to play around Abbeville or something like that. So they had, I went out there for a practice out of the school last week and had a conversation with them. I had a conversation with a few people out there as well, and what they were kind of looking for, and they just kind of want to fall under our umbrella of our recreation department. And it gives us something to be able to promote, as well as them, an area to promote with. It helps them a lot with, if they're doing fundraising and stuff, I had a conversation with them about, you know, if you're a private entity, you're doing a fundraiser, you're taking money in, you're gonna have tax stuff with that, you're gonna have a lot of, of other paperwork and then stuff like that. I had told them for certain stuff, you know, if they're getting donation money coming in, as far as their, their football goes, it can be earmarked for their football program. As well as there are, like Frederick said, there's churches, there's other organizations within the city that have come to them, that have come to me about helping, you know, them raise some funds. I told them, I told everybody kind of hold off on that until we can, you know, see if we can get it underneath the city, as far as none of the city underneath the recreation department. I spoke with council member Johnson yesterday as well, and she, as far as the ARC, members of the ARC go, everybody's comfortable with doing that. In fact, she, she said, I thought they were kind of already working under us, and I said, well, we've been working with them, but, you know, they're not under the recreation department. Doing that obviously gives them a little protection with having to get waivers and all that stuff, and they've been doing that on their own, but, you know, having the city and, and stuff like that behind them is really what they're looking for, so they can do a lot more stuff for the kids. They've got some equipment they've bought themselves individually, or had donated. I had some stuff over there that I've allowed them to use from, from the recreation department. You know, and so it's, so far it's been going really well. All the kids seem to enjoy it and have a good time with it, the parents, there's been great turnout of the parents out there, just like with the dance class. They had a lot of people coming out. And so, you know, there's probably a little due diligence that we need to do as far as getting waivers and, and all that stuff together for them and things like that. But I, I can see it kind of being similar as we do with the dance program, just having Will get some stuff up for us that'll be separate. You know, but these are the kind of programs that we want to have in our recreation department, and we want to start promoting. We've often talked about having some type of sports program, because all we have is, you know, just basic entertainment stuff and then the dance class. So I think this is a good opportunity to, to kind of bring it up underneath the arts and recreation department, you know, just see how it goes, is gonna allow them to be able to start playing some games, the people getting some tournaments, stuff together, and, and stuff like that, instead of just playing amongst themselves. Right now, they're really just practicing and, and doing stuff like that, but, yeah, that's, that's what we kind of want to do, is, is kind of present it to, to the recreation department.
I think if we're gonna put city's name on it, or under the city, we better make sure that they have signed waivers or, you know...
Well, I think once, we would do just like with the dance class, once the, it came under our end, then it, then it falls under all of our stuff.
So that liability, I guess liability, I guess is what I'm talking about, somebody comes back on the city.
That is what, like Jesse just expressed, it would be the same, similar to what we did with the dance, with any, you know, the potential if someone got hurt, there were waivers and, and things put in place. And Will was instrumental in making sure that the city was covered.
I think if we are, that would be the first...
And, but there's not anything we can do previous to that? I mean, we can't say, hey, let's draw up these waivers and do that under the city when they're not under the city. So, and once we, once we get it rolling, I, I think, like I said, there's still some due diligence we need to start getting waivers and stuff, and they have waivers out there, but they don't have, they don't, you know...
They started, you know, their, their process, and they, which was, again, was approved through the superintendent.
Through the board, correct.
And Council Johnson was the principal, so they were, you know, they were covered there. But, you know, anything with athletics and, and with counties and cities, that, that would be, that was the best option for our kids to be able to be like all the other surrounding areas, without them having to go, leave here, go to Abbeville, or go there. Like I said, we do have, you know, we have one kid, but this was before, you know, they actually got together to really want to make this happen, so, yeah.
So the flag football team being organized, sponsored by, by the ARC, or is this the ARC slash the school system?
No, no, I think, so the school system, the only thing they have out of the waivers are for the use of the field.
Field, right.
And they've already got that permission, that it went through the school board and all that stuff. Yeah, there, it's not under the school. It, it's a private, it's, it's the guys out there that are doing it right now.
So it's a private organization?
At the moment.
At the moment, being sponsoring the flag football team?
Yes.
And we, and the city or ARC is, or city through the ARC is supporting this effort?
Right now, we're just helping. What I'm, what I'm hoping to do, and what, what I was gonna, you know, make the motion to bring up to do, was to, to roll it up underneath the ARC as one of our programs. Obviously, with a little due diligence and stuff behind it, run it by Will and all that stuff. Kind of begin the process to, to start rolling them up underneath.
So progress is the community effort?
Yes.
But, okay.
Right. Because what they're gonna require, and then they're, they're gonna require a recreation department behind them to be able to continue moving forward, so that, that's the point they're at, and that's, that's what I'm hoping to be able to extend that to them. And then, obviously, you know, do everything we've needed, we regularly do to protect the city and protect the kids that are out there. And then, you know, just let them get rolling and figure out what, what we're gonna do and do our due diligence and let them do theirs.
All right, so but it's like, so that's of the program, then there has to be some collaboration, all rolled under, up a recreation program?
Correct. For it to move forward, it's gonna need to be under, under us, if we're gonna continue the, the process there, the path they're on.
That makes, makes sense.
I mean, I'll make a motion that we begin the process to start seeing about absorbing the football, the flag football.
A second.
So all in favor of the motion to begin this process, creating this flag football team?
Aye.
All right, all right.
Just as a matter, I haven't seen that much on Clay County Fort Gaines, other than the fundraiser the other day. What age are we talking about? And are they playing?
All in favor of the motion?
Well, we're in discussions.
Discussion?
Yeah, we're in discussions.
Okay, all right, discussion, okay.
So what, what ages are we talking, and are playing at the school or at the park?
They were, so they were, they were practicing at the school, or they were practicing at the, at the park while they were waiting on the approval from the school board. Then when they got the approval from the school board, they'd moved everything over to the school field.
And the school field is quite, is it enough for them to host other teams?
They haven't gotten that. We have, they have not gotten to that part.
Okay, okay.
Everything is kind of bound to...
We're at a standstill.
We're at a standstill for now.
Okay, and what, what ages are we talking about?
There was six, three.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're about, yeah, they're, they're, so there's six to nine, nine to twelve, and then they want to have some, I don't think they have enough for the older at the moment, but that's initially...
There's, they're working in between those two.
Right.
Is there any protective equipment in total football?
Not necessarily, other than, than cleats, there's not, it's not contact, you just pull the flag off of somebody.
Cleats, at least.
Yeah, yeah, they have cleats, and that was kind of what they were doing the fundraiser for, they have mouth guards, they got them all mouth guards the other day at the practice. They got, they're trying to get them, they're trying to get the parents cleats, ones that can't afford cleats, are trying to get them arranged.
Uniforms has already been designed, and they are sticking with the, the HOP logo from the school.
Okay.
So they, they're a pretty good team of parents and people who, you know, have donated, you know, to getting this off the ground. And so their biggest blessing would be to have the city.
And you know, in those, in those leagues that they have, they have certain requirements for equipment, for things like that. Right now, like, like Frederick kind of said, they're just practicing and playing amongst themselves. Now, they have the, they have the flag, the belts that have the, they'll pull flags on them. They're just magnetized little, they clip in and it just pulls right out. And like I said, they got them all mouth guards the other day. So, but yeah, once you get into those leagues, they'll have requirements for that, but they can't do that until they had, or every one of them asked for what recreation department they were in, so...
So the team, boys and girls?
Yes, correct.
Coed.
Yes. And I, I took some video out there the other day, I can send, I can kind of, I can gap cut it all together and I can send it to everyone.
I'll send it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Catherine Rolitz is...
Well, I mean, I just...
Came out and, and, and watched. And, and going back to, just going back to our park, that there has to be a better way that we remove whatever is in that locked restroom.
I don't think anything's in it. I think what happened, but this is the one on the right side, right?
They had used it for storage for that lock.
No, it was the left side they were using for storage, but the right side, I think what happened is that door shuts and it locks, which it shuts, you can't open it again from the outside.
I think I remember during the storm.
Yeah, the storm started beating the doors around, and then I might have pushed it shut. I know one time I did, and you cannot open it again.
We need to...
Yeah, and the other one's still, the other one's still, one is still...
But my thing with that park is, that many kids down there, even when it's not that many, we've got two restrooms, and those things need to be maintained.
Yeah.
Often, often, that's a lot of public use.
It's really, you know, kids are kids, they... It's really, um, you know, kids are kids, they drink a lot of water, uh, which is a good thing.
But those bathrooms need to be cleaned, yes.
Well, perhaps that can be part of the, um, part of the responsibility of the, of people running the league that they maintain that.
Well, and I don't know if they're going to be back out there again. They're only using it, they're only using it for a couple of days while they're waiting on school board.
So will you, uh, make that an item for, for public work, basically, to, to make sure that, that they, um, maintain, do better job of maintaining that?
And keeping both doors unlocked. And if that door sticks, it needs to be corrected. A new door or whatever, it needs to be happening.
All right, we'll address that.
Um, our, I'll finish up.
Ready to vote?
Yeah, we still need to vote on that.
Yeah, so all in favor, stand by?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, um, okay, so we're moving on to the other cemetery fund?
I've got a couple more things.
Oh, more, okay.
I can't handle that art stuff. Um, we're, we're doing a movie night down there at the fire department, not this Thursday, but next Thursday. Um, we're going to do, Anderson gave us the $500, uh, this year again to do the pumpkins and the decorating and all that stuff. So we're going to use that to get pumpkins. I'm going to go get them, take them down to the fire department. I'm trying to figure out if we're going to do it inside or outside. It's going to depend on how that laptop and the speakers are all going to hook up and connect. Um, we're doing the Great Pumpkin because it's kind of short. Uh, the library was kind enough to get it, uh, sent to them for us so that we have it to use. Um, and so we're going to do that. And then the only other thing that I really have for the arc, uh, like I said, that's going to be next Thursday, not this Thursday. Um, the only other thing is we probably need to see, and I'll look upstairs and see what we got. I'm going to see about maybe ordering some more nets for the basketball courts down there. Because I know there most of them are, um, seeing better days. That's all I got for the arc.
Okay, you can move on down to the cemetery fund?
Cemetery, uh, I know the pillars out front on New Park up there got clipped with the bulldozer or something. And I know there was discussion about somebody fixing it or repairing it, but I haven't seen it. I drove by there today, just double checked to see if we'd gotten done yet. But, um, that top is off of that and the brick is busted on there. I know they were doing the brick down there when I first saw it and I was talking to Byron about it, that they were doing the brick down there. And I said, if we could reach out to one of them and see if they want to come do some brick on that pole, but...
This is a sign, who is doing that, that sign, what, Georgia, whatever it is?
That was a...
Is that a state grant?
Project paid.
It's a garden club project.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a grant, it was a project they were working on.
Eighty-eight?
Okay.
Garden club.
Garden club.
I think they funded it and everything.
Mm, that was a project somebody else was working on. But the, the pillar leading into the front, that right one got clipped. They were fixing that water line back behind it and it got clipped and, um, the top's off of it and a couple pieces of brick.
I'm going to buy one on that, we'll get on that.
And like I say, eventually we're going to have to start getting stuff out of the cemetery. Oh, there was, uh, I meant to bring this up with Byron too. When I was out there driving around, there was a water leak or drippage back there on the very backside. I'll provide that. Uh, I'll, I'll point out, just one of those water pozzets just leaks. That's it.
Okay.
And nothing for policies and procedures.
Uh, department heads, Charlotte, you're the one here.
The air is fixed at the arc. It took Roosevelt till about 2:30 today to get it fixed, but it is running.
Thank you.
That's it.
Turn it down here. Um, all I have is tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, uh, it's a pre-bid meeting, um, for the sewer treatment plant project we've made at this park. On approvals permitting and everything from E, um, E P D, um, accomplished. And, um, so now we're to pre-bid, uh, at 10 o'clock tomorrow in the space. Um, after the pre-bid meeting at noon about, um, where there will be a groundbreaking ceremony of sorts, the end of true street for this, um, this project, water treatment plant project, um, leaving from meeting here. Um, the, the parking is, the space is limited for, for vehicles. So there will be a transit van here at noon to take those who want to go down there, um, to save on, on space because it is very restricted. Um, so, um...
What's the time of that, again?
Uh, noon. Noon for, uh, and 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock for the, um, pre-bid. Okay? That's all I have. Uh, and Chopin, just to get a count, anybody who, um, expect to go down for the groundbreaking and pre-bid?
I'll, I'll tend the, um...
Pre-bid, the groundbreaking, pre-bid, both? Pre-bid, okay, good, all right. Okay, um, that's me. Oh, um, in your package were FYIs, um, uh, the, the delivery, uh, service delivery, uh, um, a house build as a bill relative to that, that's too much FYI. I did send it in your email so you can click on any necessary links. Okay? And, um, that's it. Charlotte, did you want to speak to this other document?
No, just FYI.
Just FYI, okay. All right. Um, council, um...
I don't see anything.
Nothing, uh, Jesse?
Uh, just recap and stuff. Did we ever get that shirt money in, on the shirts you ordered yourself?
I understand.
The shirt money on the shirts, you said you were going to pay back the shirts you ordered yourself? You said you were going to pay back, you said you didn't ever get that payback?
Uh, I have not.
Is there any mower?
Uh, there are no, we, it was 11,000 received and that wasn't enough to cover our expenses on the north and, and do the mower as well. With the money isn't coming, not there to do all of it. Uh, we're still waiting on the final numbers from the equipment for the, uh, uh, the lift stations, the three lift stations and until we get that, but 11,000, um, was not enough to do all of this.
So we still have any idea of what we want to have?
No, still, uh, we have to get a little more, few more dollars in, in the till and, and see which comes first, more dollars in the till or we get the final numbers on these, on these, um, treatment plants, on the lift, um, lift stations, sorry, treatment, on lift stations, three lift stations.
Okay. And then my final thing is, I think all of us kind of, when we are outside of this building, we are all still representatives of the city and the way we approach people and talk to people in the public and go into businesses, go into homes, go into whenever we're talking to people, that we need to understand we are still representatives of the city and try to be as professional and polite as possible when we approach people around here. And because people don't come and say, Jesse talked to me badly, or, you know, Jesse came to Councilman Simmons, you know, Councilmember Rhodes, Councilmember Spain, you know, people come and say that this is part of our first name, as much as we like it or not, even outside of this building. So when we, when we speak to people around here, talk to people, we, we need to keep that in mind and try to be as polite as possible in, in certain circumstances. And just remember that we are at all times representatives of the city. And that's all I got.
Counselor?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, the fact that we're using some T I A money for some road repair and that's allowed for that and that's fine. And especially on this project where time is an issue, that makes total sense. But I think we all need to keep in mind, um, the one other benefit to keeping that T I A money as high as we can possibly keep it is because we can use it as a local match for state and federal funding. And then the more we keep in that account, the more chance we have to participate in grants because we will have matching, um, money for, for matching state and local grant, uh, state and federal grants. So, I mean, there's one source for getting those grants when we have to match. So just keep it in the back of your mind not to use that money up when we could be using L-MIG or something other for the road repairs. Not saying that on that project, but just in general. Just to keep that T I A, um, account as high as we can possibly do it. Um, just in previous conversation with Andy, um, I'm thinking we might want to invite him back if we're interested in this, um, tax recovery. Just because I think Andy, I don't know if I misunderstood or what, but you're, you're able to help us recover tax, delinquent taxes. And it cannot be done in arrears, is what you said?
Right, so basically what you're saying is it's a competing lien, basically, well, I think what you mean is...
You can't go back and collect it, I mean, if we signed up with you, you can help us with taxes.
It'd be starting forward from here.
From that point forward.
It would be starting forward based on the last...
Let's just add it to the next month if he's okay with that, or we have this conversation?
Because it's kind of a tricky question.
Okay.
There is a, it's a yes, no answer to that because it depends.
We have, we have, we have been pending for, so if this is a question, invitation to another meeting.
I think it's a time, time element involved if we want to be, have his service before tax season comes in and we start collecting monies in December.
He has agreed to come, to come back.
I'll go back and talk, yes.
So I think we need to, yeah, consider that. Um, and just another, just another thing that just caught my attention at the last meeting when we were talking about, um, the police budget in Arlington. And Jesse was actually looking over the sheet and we get in the, the part where they, um, their insurance rates were so much lower, very low. And you actually made the comment, you said, ours are quite high, much higher than that.
They only pay a portion.
Exactly, that's what, that's kind of my comment. We pay 100% of all our employees', um, individual insurance. And I'm not sure that everybody else does that. Um, or obviously Arlington doesn't. Um, and I may check with the county and they only pay 80% of their employee insurance. And I'm just wondering as we move along, do we want to still keep it at 100? If you have 10 employees, you're, you're looking at almost $10,000 a year per employee, which is basically giving them right at $1,000 a month. And they're paying, if you had, if you had 110 employees, you could cut it to 80%, well, you save $20,000 right there just by not funding their full insurance. I'm just tossing it out there as something...
Well, we had a lower pay rate because of that. And we also offered to our employees the option to take pay versus taking insurance. And not a single person took it. At versus the equivalent pay to what that is and not a single person took it. But we paid lower because we paid higher in insurance so that we could keep people...
But then we need to be aware of that when they're coming in fussing about, oh, someone's who only makes this much an hour, but they're also making almost $1,000 a month in insurance.
And we've had that conversation with them before.
As I think that conversation was...
Yeah, so anyway, I was just pointing that out, that is just something to keep in mind.
All right.
Um, let's just not forget that we got to import the things for Will. So by next month, he'll come in, he can be on the road, uh, to be working on it. Because I think those two things really, we really need to get his attention today.
That's it? All right, um... Um, same thing, um, and to follow up again, um, on the, the vehicle, uh, the sales, we need to ensure that that is, um, in the paper. And I do know that people, for the record, uh, I don't know what is happening with the paper, but there's a lot of information that does not make the paper in a timely manner. So I don't know how we, we need to, um, you know, tie into that and ask the questions of why certain information is only reaching the paper at, uh, term. Um, key note as well, um, as far as next month, uh, our next meeting will fall on Veterans Day. If you look at your calendars. If I'm not mistaken. If you guys look at your calendar, I think it's, um, that we may need, uh, to figure out how we are going to, um, how we're going to handle that next month's meeting. Is that Veterans Day?
It is.
It is?
Are you suggesting we reschedule?
Uh, I, I was going to bring, just bring it to council's attention that, you know, everything is closed, you know, on Veterans Day. So how do we proceed with, um, you know, our meeting?
Is that a problem for you?
I mean, we can tell Peter, just someone should come down and open it up for us.
I mean, I, I don't necessarily know what. Um, my plans are I like to eat, so, I, I mean, they offer free meals. Well, it's up to coun, I mean, it's up to council. I just wanted to put it out there, uh, that, um...
I mean, the packets go out in the, Charlotte?
It always goes out the Thursday before the meeting, the Friday, Thursday before.
What would you, would you be available then for, for this task at council?
If y'all going, big meeting, I will be here.
Yeah, because I don't know if we can change regularly scheduled meeting after we approved at the beginning of the year. I don't believe that is allowed, yeah.
It would have to run in the paper.
Yeah.
That was one that will have to run in the paper, that we rescheduled it for next month if you're going to reschedule.
It's up to council, though, we need to make the decision, ain't it?
Yeah, because it has, yeah.
I, I don't have a problem with, you know, me, I'm a veteran and if you offer a meal, then I will be here.
I'm not offering it, I'm, I'm taking up the offers. Uh, but no, I don't have a problem with, uh, keeping it on our calendar right now. So, yeah.
All right, so no change on, uh, so change council members? No change, okay. All right. Anything other than more?
Yes, one final thing. I'm sorry, I do not like to keep big, big, horse. But at some point, we have to get Director Sands and those guys that are, that are working. We have to get them equipped. I, I, and I hear we keep talking about the, the, um, sewage, uh, the things, right?
Lift stations.
The lift stations. But we cannot continue not knowing if we're going to get or when something is going to come in. Because my fear is he has told us the dire need of that more. And if it happens to go out, we cannot go over to the calendar and, and, and get, you know, the help that we once used to get. Not saying that they will not do it, but I just think as, as the city, we should not have to do that. I just don't feel that way. Um, and if we go back prior to the police department shutting down, anything that chief came in here and asked for, I don't care how small it was, he was able to get it. And this, those are facts. So even if we felt that it could wait, he was able to get it. And for those guys to be busting their chops, doing the best that they can with as little as they can, I think we need to, um, we need to tighten up, um, and just stop in telling them no. I, I, I'm, and I don't want to go into next month and definitely don't want to go into December having to continuously talk about the ser, the things that they need. And we do know Director Sands uses his personal tools to complete the work of the city. And that should be absolutely, that should be an absolutely no. That needs, that needs to stop.
But, um, I, um, the public works department, um, their needs are being addressed on a regular basis. Um, and is always continued to fund, funds available. So, uh, we can't, we don't make money here. But, uh, but they are not going, uh, they're not being, they're not distressed. Okay, so whenever a need...
According to who?
Well, according to myself.
According to who?
According to myself and, and Mr. Sands.
Okay.
So, so I, we work, but I, I have, it is my understanding that he and I speak regularly, if not daily, um, and for the most part, daily. Uh, so I'm fully aware of their needs and, and I, Charlotte and I work to make sure that they get the equipment that they need.
Okay, well, I, again, I...
That AC don't even work in the drive.
I'm just going, I'm, as counselor, I am stating my, where I sit on this issue is that we cannot continue to allow them to work for what they're working for and not have the equipment to do the job of the city.
Point taken. All right, anything more? All right, anything more? Can I get a motion to approve the invoices?
I make a motion, I'm going to go ahead.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the table?
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn?
I make the motion, do we adjourn?
Second.
On the table?
Aye.